Oh, I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. A roll call, please.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright here. Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Present.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Here.
And Mayor Protem Wall asked to be excused.
Excused.
Second. So it's been moved and seconded to excuse Mayor Protem Wall. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? He is excused. Okay, public comments. Do we have any public comments?
No one signed up for public comments for general comments. But there will be a comment after one of the particular items.
Okay, thank you. So next would be the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. A few things to mention tonight. The salary commission that is required by Mount Lake Terrace City Code every five years is going to wrap up their work with a public hearing next Monday night on the 18th to forward their proposal. And we have issued the request for proposals for the middle housing, middle housing work that needs to be done, that along with some of the zoning implementation work that council adopted as policy as part of the comprehensive plan, will be working on implementing that. Let's see. If you hadn't noticed, the utility reps for the boxes down at 56th and 236th, they're done. I think they look great. So go take a look if you haven't been able to drive or walk by yet. And unfortunately, as happens most years, the north playground at Lake Ballinger is closed because it's too wet. So just wanted to let everybody know about that. Finally, item number 10 this evening. We have three contracts on the agenda for prosecutor, public defender, and our state lobbyist. Two of those I would like to table and move to a future meeting. Date not certain. I got a couple of questions from council members that with the documentation I had, I couldn't answer, and I want to be able to answer those before we bring those to you formally. So would request that we bring or that we remove the prosecutor and public defender contracts tonight, but move forward with the state lobbyist contract.
Do we need to vote on that? That'll be a change.
Yeah, please. And it's just date not certain. We will announce the date at a future time.
All right, so who wants to?
Items 10A and B.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm... What's that? Oh, yep, Mayor, I move that we table items nine, A, and B to another date.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to table those two items. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So we have now tabled those two items.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of the city manager? I guess not. Thank you. All right, so next is the review, public hearing and vote on the ordinance adopting the property tax levy.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Let me get this pulled up. This one? Pardon? I can't see it. Oh, no. This one? Nope. I got it? Got it? Okay, tonight, the purpose of this presentation is to set the levy for the collection of property taxes for 25. So we're going to look at kind of the background, the legal items regarding property tax. We'll look at the general fund, the revenues, the expenditures. There will be a couple levy options for you to choose from. And also, we'll have a public hearing and a vote and another item, just comparisons of different cities and their property tax. Okay, we are required by law to hold a public hearing on the possible increase of property taxes annually. The hearing and the adoption needs to be before the end of November. We have to submit our levy certification to the county commissioners and also the county assessors. And this year, we are able to increase the limit is 1%. I won't go into the IPD implicit price deflator. It's a little more complicated, and we don't need to worry about it this year. And the assessed value has gone up 0.25%, increased to $5.2 billion, and 74 million of that is new construction. So for the...
Could you restate the new or the, yeah, the new construction?
That is 74 million. It's like 1.41% of the $5.2 billion. And that's for the full taxing district where we can collect on the property taxes. Does that make sense? Okay. So our general fund revenues, the property tax does come into the general fund. Most of our revenues are from taxes. It is 76% of our revenues in the general fund are from taxes. Property taxes, 21%. We also have about 18% in goods and services, and the rest is in just miscellaneous other, just miscellaneous and shared revenues from the state. For our expenditures, most of our expenditures in our general fund are for public safety. And next is administration, and then community and economic development, and then transfers out. The transfers out are mainly to streets and to debt service. So this shows your property tax for a home. When you get your property tax bill, this is how it's divided up. So the majority of it, as we probably all know, is the school district, so state school fund and school district. And that is about 62% of your taxes, property taxes, go to schools. The city collects 10%, and then about 28% is all the rest that you see, the county, library, fire, hospital, regional transit authority, and that's 28%. This shows the non-voted versus voted taxes for the last slide for the bill that you receive. So for Mount Lake Terrace, the .14 cents per thousand is for voted. It's for the city hall that was voted in 2017, I believe. And the .61 per thousand assessed value is the non-voted. Now, the slides that I'm showing you, all the data is really from 2024 because we do not have 25 data yet. So we're just looking at kind of what has happened. And this also shows the non-voted and voted. It's pretty close to 50/50 on each.
And can you remind us when that city hall bond service expires?
It matures in 47, 2047. It's a 30-year bond. And I will turn it over to our accounting technician, Caitlin Ranky, for the rest of
This graph is 2013 to 2024's assessed value and then the estimate for 2025, which is 25%, which Sir Kay already mentioned. And then this graph, the first column, is estimated without the 1% increase, and then the second one is with the estimated 1% increase. 370 is what it would cost the average home without, and 374 is what it would cost the average home with, so an increase of $4. And this shows assessed values and taxes paid in 2024 and previous years. The big drop from 2023 to 2024 was when we annexed into the fire services. And 2024, we did not take the 1% increase. 2025 is showing the increase with an increase of 7. Did I miss one?
No. I'm just going to add that the levy bond, you'll see that it is going down by $2. It was $84 in '24, and it's going down just because the payment goes down this year a
This is typical property tax for an average resident in Snohomish County. Mount Lake Terrace is right in the middle. This is typical levy per resident in Snohomish County cities. Mount Lake Terrace is on the lower middle side here also. Rate is the total tax bill per home. I know it is really small. And this is the average home value in Snohomish County cities. We are on the higher side of the middle.
Okay. Do we have any questions? We can then move on to the... Do we need to open the public hearing? All right, who wants to open the public? Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we open the public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now open. Do we have anyone signed up?
No one has signed up in person or for remote testimony.
All right. Do we have? Do we have any questions before we move on on this one? Nope. All right. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
A move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now closed. And is there a motion on the table? We're lost without Brian. Yeah, it's back in this section, which I'm trying to find.
All right.
Go ahead, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt the property tax levy ordinance.
Is that a question or a second?
Public hearing during a work session.
We did know or did note on the agenda that action would be taken at this meeting for property tax. So this has been advertised and in the paper record.
Okay, so now we're voting on the... I just got lost here.
There's a motion on the table that needs a second.
Second.
So, okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So motion carries. And so? Thank you very much. He always sings. All right, so next is the review of the ADA, American with Disabilities Act curb ramp project with our city manager, Rich Meredith.
Rich has been promoted. We'll have Rich come up and Rich and Gary come up and go through the project with you. Thanks.
Good evening, Rich Meredith, city engineer. I am here to present our, a small pedestrian safety project. This is using some of the ARPA funds that we were allocated. This project is on 224th next to Evergreen Park. We're doing this project in conjunction with the Evergreen Playfield improvements that are, I think, under advertisement right now. We should be awarding those this year, too. So we, the project includes, let me see, here's a nice map of it. The project includes improvements at the intersection of 56th and also at the mid-block crossing on 224th. We took a look at the intersection. You can see this intersection here. And we realized that there's a, it's pretty wide space. There's a lot of pedestrian activity out here. And so with this project, we want to put in new curb ramps to make it ADA accessible. But we're also, we've received a number of complaints for pedestrian access across here. And so we decided to put in a curb bulb or two curb bulbs out here to shorten that crossing distance. It's going to eliminate a northbound right turn lane. I think there's currently a right turn lane to get onto that street. But given that the volumes are very low, a right turn lane, a separate right turn lane isn't needed, and we feel that the pedestrian safety improvements, the shorter crossing distance are a better benefit for the traveling public. So let's see. The current curb ramps out there, if you've ever seen them, they do not meet our current standards, the current ADA standards. So this is going to help us in a couple ways. We're going to have an ADA accessible route. We're looking at some repaving opportunities out here, and we'll have to update them for that anyway. So here's a good opportunity to get some immediate improvement, support the changes that are happening with the park, and use up some of those wonderful ARPA dollars that we have. Here's kind of a schematic. It's a little hard to read, but you can kind of see how we're putting in a curb bulb in the northeast corner right here to narrow the crossing, and we're also putting one on the south side. We'll be eliminating these arrows because this right turn lane is going away. So the ADA accessible route will be the north-south route and then the east-west route on the north leg. Mid-block, we're also, this crossing between the fields is not in very good shape, and so we're going to clean up all this also. There is concrete, textured concrete crosswalk paving out there that's getting broken up, so we'll be repairing that to make it a nice, smooth route. So the project has a total of six curb ramps, then we'll have the two curb bulb outs. We're also adding in a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, the RRFBs. Got to have them. I love RFBs. The engineer's estimate came in at 201,000, but the low bid was actually under the engineer's estimate. So high fives to Lucas, who did the design and the PM work on this. We advertised for two weeks, so we're meeting our purchasing policy and the guidance for how to properly advertise this. We had, I believe, seven, yeah, seven bids, and this was the best one, so. So with the project, we're using the low bid, and we have a 15% contingency for any unforeseen construction issues out there. So our total request is for $229,432.62. Staff recommends that we award this contract to the RRJ company to build these improvements. Once we sign the contract, then the ARPA funds will be obligated this year, and construction will probably happen in January, February, maybe even March, depending on weather. So with that, I'm open for any questions.
I'll go ahead and call some of our son more.
Just want to ask one. At the end of 54th and 224th, where Ed Maurer lived, or the Maurer home, that's a horrible turn. Is there any way there'd be any extra funds to kind of stripe that even more? People either take it too wide, or they don't take it enough. It's just at the end of the playfield where there's an extra, people, well, they park there during turn to terrace, but it's just a bad corner.
I'm happy to have our traffic engineer, John Merrick, take a look at that.
Go ahead, Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Really excited about this project. I think it's, cheap isn't the word for it, but, you know, less than I was expecting for something of this nature. And I guess, first question, I haven't delved into the contract, but, you know, want to make sure that start date is, the start date, is there any way to make sure that we, just thinking about another recent project that we put out or that we've got cooking that will be delayed, want to make sure that this sort of starts in this window. And so that may be a question you want to take a swing at, but just wanted to register my interest in making sure that the timeline that you're laying out is the timeline we
That's our current plan. There are materials they're going to have to open or order that have a long lead time, the RFB system. So we won't be able to complete the project right away while the materials are being ordered. But it's really dependent on the weather. If we have a mild winter, they can open up the road and start getting some of the concrete work done. But if it gets too cold or it gets too wet, you know, we're going to hold off on that. So that's why we're thinking that it's probably realistic to issue the contract, start to procure all the materials, and then look at more of a February-ish start date.
Yeah, and maybe my concern isn't comparing it to this other dynamic that we have. It's a different type of project, et cetera. Just weather and other dynamics that are out of our control aside, want to make sure that if there are, want to make sure that we've got a contract that will sort of hold folks to this timeline, all things considered. So there, you know, there's that. And then seem like this is a higher number of bids than we might usually get. Is that the case?
I was pleased we got that many bids because it means we're getting some good competitive prices. Normally, this time of year, yeah, I don't normally see that many. But, yeah, it's fortunate, and it kind of validated the engineer's estimate and that we are getting, I didn't see a big range on the bids, so.
Yes, I want outlier, but I guess, you know, just given the number of bids, what else does it mean? I'm just wondering in terms of overall sort of marketplace dynamics, or can, because I view the more competition to mean sort of downward pressure on prices for projects like this.
Well, one interesting thing I noted with this was the price of the curb ramps, the unit prices. I was comparing them with WashDOT. They have standard bid items for helping you with your estimates. And the bid prices on the WashDOTs are up around $10,000 a curb ramp, and ours came in more about $3,000 or $3,500, which is more in line with what I would expect to see. So I think that we're getting reasonable bids here, but, you know, if you get into a point where there's a lot of work out there and not enough bidders, then they can bid them up as high as $10,000 a ramp, so.
Got it. Thanks for the commentary.
Councilmember Murray and then Sonmore.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you both. It's good to see you. And, yeah, excited about the project and excited for it to move forward, but I did have a couple of questions. I think one, to piggyback on Councilmember Payne Donovan's questions about costs, is just, we, I know we just did a kind of a similar-ish project, right, on 48th, and that was a project, and initially, we had a much lower price point on, from where we ended up. And, you know, there are a lot of reasons for that. We expanded the scope, and we did some other things that needed to be done as we were doing it. But I guess in thinking about total cost of this project, do we anticipate that there is other work we may need to or benefit from, I guess, including as part of this project that we don't already have included as part of our budget or anything along those lines in terms of costs we don't see reflected here that we haven't already planned for?
The previous project, the Safe Routes to School project, was much more complicated because it tore up the whole road, and it was more of a complete street project. We're opening the pavement up, and we found some utilities that were in poor condition and some items that were in the ground that we didn't know were there. This project is more of just surface repairs, so I'm pretty confident that we've captured what we're going to need to address here. If we wanted to add scope to it, I'm going to try and not do that because I would rather focus on getting these done. And then with the Evergreen Playfield renovation, if there is other work that needs to be done out there, you know, there's another opportunity to tag on to that. But we were hoping to get the frontage improvements, the essential ones, done with this so they didn't have to use their limited dollars for that.
Great, thank you. And then just two questions around just kind of how this project maybe interacts with other work that we're doing. So up that block, about halfway through, there's already a rapid flashing beacon crosswalk. I guess I'm curious if we took a look at that and just any impact and people, like, stopping at one and, you know, making sure that they still are stopping at the net. I guess I'm just curious if there's any sort of interaction between those two, given the proximity that, if we took a look at that.
We looked at moving the mid-block one to this location, but there's times in the summer that there's people using both locations. What I've found with the RFB locations, it's not like a traffic light where you have to stop at one and stop at the other. It'd have to be a lot of activity to generate that. It's usually one or the other. So we considered that, and given the spacing between them, we decided since it is a playfield and there's a lot of kids and people using both these crossings, that we would keep them both.
No, that's great. I was going to say, I use the mid-block one all the time, so I'm a fan. I was just curious. And then my other question was around kind of just, we have, you know, our main street plan further down on 56th and kind of the layout for the street in terms of lanes and bike lanes and that sort of thing. I guess I'm curious if we've looked at if, in the future, we were to extend that at 56th, if this plan and, you know, the layout facilitates us being able to extend that in a way consistent with that.
We looked at that also, and this, the curb bulbs will actually interfere with the same cross-section that we have down. same cross-section that we have down on further south. And we debated it among ourselves, which is better, to have parking adjacent to the park as kind of a buffer, or to have no parking, which is what would happen with, if we use the same cross-section down in town center. And we kind of decided that it would be more useful to the people that were in the park, and in trying to keep traffic speeds calmer next to parked cars and such, to maintain that parking. So that's why we decided that curb bulbs would actually further enforce that. So, our thought is that we would carry the bike lanes and the two-way left turn lane up to, I think about 228th, and then transition to, we could still carry bike lanes, this won't prohibit bike lanes, but we wouldn't have a center turn lane.
Super helpful, thank you. No, I'm excited about the project, and I will say, I loved this map. It did make me think about the fact that we've got part of Evergreen Playfield north of 224th and part, you know, south, and that all connects into Terrace Creek Park. And I'm glad we're at least refinishing that crosswalk, because, I mean, it really is just, I mean, it connects two parks, and that road kind of just gets in the way. And I think to Councilmember Sonmore's point, folks go far too fast down that road far too often. But, I mean, I will say, I was like, oh, I was gonna say, maybe we need more than just a crosswalk there. But I think it's a really, really good start, and I'm excited about the safety improvements and what that means for folks as they get around the community. So thanks for all your work, Rich.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sonmore.
My question actually goes back to what Erin said a couple meetings ago about looking at safe transportation, because there's so many people dying on the road. And so, at the end of the street, they take it too wide, but coming off 44th, or 56, sorry, and going down 224th, where you're going to do that, they turn too wide, too. So I'm hoping that kind of slows it down. And I do know, sometimes I drive that road a lot, so, and I have a friend that lives real close to there, so I'm, sometimes there's cars parked there late at night, and I'm just wondering, too, you said add on to the project of maybe adding some more lights in there. Sometimes I've seen some bad things go on in that street, but I think, like you said, this at least will help improve that area, and maybe people won't take the corners. You don't realize it until you get up on it, and you just kind of overswing a little bit. And so, both of those sections, I think, will really help. And then, there's so many kids that run back and forth when they're playing soccer. I think that will really help a lot, too. So I'm really happy with this project.
Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your excellent thought process on this intersection. Approximately 34 years ago, I was almost run over there with my son in a stroller, but the car stopped about 16 feet before. But I don't know if we can stop the speeders. But it's also nice, because people, when you want to take a left there, they want to illegally pass you on the right. And number one, the infraction is they're passing in a parking lane, and they don't know what that's going to cost them. And the second one is they're passing on an intersection, that's going to cost you. And the third one is they're passing at a crosswalk. So, they don't know these things. As far as the turning extra wide, which a lot of people do, I don't know where they got that notion. Perhaps we're going to have to work with the driver education program in the state of Washington, and help them out with, you don't have to do a big bow to take a right. So, anyway, but I appreciate your thought process, and this is going to make a big difference in our city. Thank you.
I actually think that the curb bulb in the southeast corner is going to address some of the wide turns, because now people are turning from the travel lane, not up against the curb. And so, they'll, they should already be getting back into their lane when they make the turn. And we designed it so that a single-unit truck, you know, like a delivery truck, a UPS garbage, can actually make that turn without crossing over the center line, so.
Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, love what I'm seeing. I can already envision next year's parade not being already a stacked area, and now you'd be standing on brand-new stuff. So I hope we take advantage of talking about that area when we get to Turde Terrace. That said, much like I love being in the air, but I hate everything else about flying, that's what I'm about to point out here. So I just want to say, one, I don't know how this works, so are there any road closures? And really, what I'm concerned about is everything they're talking about, the speed, except it'd be on 58th to get around 56th, and as soon as you get off of 58th, you're hitting St. Pius. And those cars are already too close, in my opinion, in that little stretch right in front of the water tower. So I'm just like, ah, I hear a whole lot of, side by side, that's not your problem, as much as just making sure, if we're closing streets, that we do as best we can to communicate to those folks, at least St. Pius, because there's a lot of traffic on that side. And I'm thinking, if there's closures, again, they would have to go over there to get south. And then the only other piece of that is recognizing there are technically three communities being impacted by the four corners. So just making sure that we communicate to them, because they are going to be under a lot of noise for a long time. And, again, they will love it at the end, but nobody likes the process. So just, again, I don't know that we'll have any water main strikes or anything like that, but just in the spirit of, we have had folks concerned when we've done work near their home, treat that same thing here, even though there aren't quote-unquote "businesses" nearby. So, I'm sure you're already going to do that, just want to make sure that folks knew that. We were thinking of that as well.
Yeah, I, at this point, I'm hoping we don't have to have any road closures. We'll have lane closures around each one of the corners, but they should be able to schedule their work so that they don't have to close the whole road. We wouldn't allow them to close 56. I would prefer not to have them close 224th, because it does get school bus traffic and other people through there. And I think they can do the work, you know, corner by corner. So we're hoping that we can avoid the closures. And the amount of area is actually pretty small for demo, so they should be able to do removal in a day or two, so.
So my question is, how long has this been in the works? Because just recently, people started complaining about the speeding over there, and I thought, wow, they just started complaining? I let the city manager know, and already we're doing this?
We are getting to the point where we're able to be proactive.
Oh, my goodness.
What is that?
So, we're probably going to get a lot of good feedback, I hope, from our community, because they just started complaining about this a few months ago, that I know of. Well, it probably has been going on a long time, but.
I think there's been concerns raised over the years. But, yeah, as Jeff said, you know, we're getting to the point where we're getting some of our planning work done, and we're, we've got the staff in place that is able to focus on coming up with some really good projects to meet our current needs, so.
That is wonderful. Thank you. All right, so, we don't vote on anything here. I'm looking at the wrong thing here.
Go on the consent agenda for the next meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you. So do we have anything else with you guys? No? Nope? Next is the review of the ordinance amending the MTMC, 2.120.190 related to the hearing examiner's appeals process with our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This one is relatively simple. We just wanted to make sure that the code was consistent across titles. Currently, this section of the code, Chapter 2.120.090, has a appeal period of 15 days, and we'd like to change that to 14, just to ensure consistency. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Woodard?
No, I'm messing with you.
Oh, you don't? Okay. All right. So, this, you know, I, oops.
So, relatively minor, but it is code, so it does have to be brought to council. So, thanks. It'll be on consent for your next meeting.
All right. That is what I'm trying to find, and I usually have it on this page that I not. Okay. All right, so next is the review of the multifamily tax exemption code amendment with our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Jennifer's just going to pull up one slide here. I think it's Slide 10 on that presentation that was attached to your information packet. So, Washington State RCW 8414 authorizes cities to exempt the improvement value of new housing, or the rehabilitation of old housing, from the ad valorem property tax for a period of 12 or 20 years. In 2008, you actually had a code that did that, but it did sunset. And in 2022, council considered a new section of code that would allow what we call the MFTE program, or the multifamily property tax exemption program. So, council discussed, oops.
No, it's fine.
Slide 10. So, in August of 2022, council discussed the eight- and 12-year options and the affordability thresholds. Maybe 11. And had the Concord group come in and perform an analysis. And that analysis, we shared that with you in your packet, but I wanted to show the slide here. What council adopted with ordinance 2013 was an MFTE program adopted on October 3rd, 2022, that allowed for the 12-year extension, or the 12-year program, eight and 12, but in this case, we're talking about the 12-year, that shows, and this is hypothetical, so it's based on the number of units. This analysis shows a 250-unit project, which, that's a pretty reasonable project for our area. So, what we would be looking at is a reduction over the period of about 1.8 million. And if an extension is taken advantage of, you would see a reduction just because of the increased property value over time of a little over 4.5 million. I do want to stress, as part of this discussion, that even if we entered in, adopted an ordinance, considered an ordinance, and then adopted it, that would allow for the extension, the extension has to be applied for within 18 months of the expiration of the first program, which is already authorized. And council was under no obligation at that time to permit the extension. With that, the target area for the MFTE program is expected to accommodate about 3,000 housing units total. And according to the recently adopted comprehensive plan, if we use the assumption, and this is purely an assumption, that 50% of the new development would take advantage of the MFTE program, you're looking at about 1,500 units. Of that, under the currently adopted ordinance, you, the developer is required to provide 20% of the units at an affordable, at 80% of the area median income. So you would be looking at 300 affordable units that would be produced as part of the MFTE, at 80% of area median income. So, again, that number, 50% number, is an assumption. It's not a number to be relied upon. It's just something to give you a thumbnail about the type of development that you could potentially be looking at in the community. So, again, there are no limits on what communities may offer this extension, and it is at the discretion of the city council to approve or deny requests for extension after adopting the code language. At this point, I'd be happy to hear discussion, answer any questions if I can, and then would like direction on preparation of an ordinance that would come before you at a future date. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilmember Payne Donovan, you had your hand up first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I reserve the right to ask more questions later, but I'm curious about what are neighbors, or what other cities might have MFTE programs on the books now? How many have a similar extension clause?
Yeah, many of the programs have the extension clause, I think primarily because it doesn't convey an obligation to extend. It's an opportunity. And I think that's, to quantify it, I say many, but to quantify it, I don't have the exact number, but I'd be happy to find that.
Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to confirm, so the extension also extends the affordability of those units for the entire time of the extension, correct?
Yeah, so the affordability component, and I'm trying to remember the RCW in particular, I believe the affordability component needs to be for a longer period than the extension. I'm trying to remember, and I'll look up the RCW, but I believe the affordability component is a set number of years regardless, which is what makes the economics difficult.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Just had a couple questions. So if we, if only 50% take advantage of it, how much is the city actually losing in property tax being collected and sales tax? And then the other thing we've been talking a lot about is so many apartments going in, and now we're going to get an economic person coming in, we want to be careful about what we put into the city. So are we looking to encourage more apartments in our city? And that's something we've been wanting to talk about for a while, about our downtown. And how many more units of apartments are coming in that are on the books? I know we have, like, 500 here, 300 there.
There's currently about 1,000 in the pipeline, a little under 1,000. But, like I mentioned, the comprehensive plan and the town center plan that council has already adopted contemplate 3,000 housing units in the town center area. So that is, what, I-5 to 56th, the other side of 56th, the adjacent parcels, and then, what, 231st to south of 236th, so north and south, the area, the town center area that council has adopted.
And I'm just asking about how much, if we didn't do this, and they still built, how much of an impact of income would the city get?
So you see the reductions on, as part of the presentation on the screen there. So basically, by adopting the MFTE program, the 12-year already, for each 20, 250-unit development, you are looking at a reduction of a little over 1.8 million. Now, this is according to the analysis, but I think that was done in '22, but I think is still very relevant. With the extension, you're looking at a reduction in revenue of 4.569 million, based on the data and the analysis that we have. Again, for the benefit of providing affordable units, 20% of the affordable units at 80% of the area median income.
So, can I ask, if we're losing, and this would only bring in if we used the 50%, 300 affordable units, and, did you already say what affordable is?
80% of area median income.
AMI is approximately, what, 120,000 now? That's 80% of that.
Yeah, so that's roughly for a two-person household, which I think is a fair assumption for apartment dwelling. That's around $96,000 currently for this year.
$96,000 for rent, or what did you just?
For, that would be 80% of the AMI.
Can we have Councilmember Murray ask a question?
Jeff, will you, so I know we reviewed, oh, sorry. I know we reviewed Slide 11 specifically, and kind of the, you know, net impact of a hypothetical 250-unit project, but I guess I want to make sure that maybe you could review the next slide as well, which talks about the net impact, financial impact versus no development, which I think is an important component of our decision-making process.
Yeah, so you can see here, this next one would show you the net fiscal impact versus net development. So with the 12-year program that we currently have, and assuming that a 250-unit project is built, you're looking at a revenue, basically zero over what we have now, or revenue of 15.6 million. And if we have, also add the 12-year extension, that same 250-unit project would generate 12.8, what is that, 12.83? 12.83 million. So that's over no development, basically what's currently on the ground. So yes, we are currently, under the 12-year program, giving up some revenue, but the benefit there, you can see for yourself. With the 12-year extension, the benefit's a little bit less, but you're still having a substantial amount of revenue over and above what is currently generated.
Councilmember Sonmore?
That doesn't mean somebody else could build something else on that property. That's, you're saying that if, I don't think any development will not be happening in our city, especially then, since light rail came in. So you're saying you think this is the assumption that it could happen, that there wouldn't be any development?
I think we have to assume the net, the net zero. We can't predict, you know, that's why the 250-unit development is an assumption. We don't know how big the development would be, but we have to have something to base an analysis on.
I'm just bringing it up because we're looking at our budget going under, and so we have to be very strategic. I know we want to bring more in, but I'm just thinking if it went full board, another 3,000 on top of everything else, remember, it's also going to tax our police, our water, a lot of different things too. So just looking at the whole package.
Yeah, and just, and just to be clear, the 3,000 units, we are planning to happen regardless. This is, this discussion, I think, is a matter of providing affordable housing. So even if, and we don't have the analysis up here on the screen, but even if a project does not take advantage of the, this MFT program, those units are still planned to be built as part of the comp plan that was adopted by council and the town center plan that was adopted by council.
Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. You always want to keep it as simple as possible because we're actually talking about, this is going to happen, not necessarily extension, but we have an actual concrete, somebody wants the extension. So at the base level, looking at slide 11 versus slide 12, did I just get that mixed up? Nope, I did. Yes, no, I got it right. So slide 12, excuse me, slide 11, at the 12-year with the extension, is saying you will forsake about $4 million and a half if you want people in your city at the 80 AMI.
That's correct.
At the end of the day, that's what we're suggesting, right?
Yes.
Because I want to make sure our residents understand, if I am at 81%, I am not eligible to apply for that actual unit. So it's not like, oh, no, we have it, and then there's still going to be people pricing them out. You literally have to be at 80 or worse off, and I do mean worse off, to apply for that specific unit, right? So those units are designated, just want to make sure we're clear.
That's correct.
So we are saying this city is willing to forsake $4.5 million to make sure we have 80% AMI in our thought process as these units come. But in that same forsaking of the $4.5 million, you stand to gain almost 13 million, which is to say, if we said, hey, best of luck, 80 AMI, we could, in this same scenario, have that 250 built, and it would be, here's where I don't do my math very well, what is that, 17 and a half million dollars, right? So that's, that's generally, if we put those together, we would see.
Yeah, so just, I just want to make sure, the graph on the thing there is for the eight-year no extension, so we don't have a bar that shows, you know, what it would be with no MFT at all. I'm sure we could figure that out, but I just want to make sure you had that, that piece of info.
Yeah, and again, I'm just, from a person who's just tuning in and going, what are y'all talking about? Just want to make sure they recognize that what we're saying is, is that slide 12, if we weren't talking MFT, and we were still having this conversation, that number 1284 with the extension theoretically wouldn't be 12 years with the extension, it would just be the 17 and a half. So what, again, what we're actually saying as a city is, we are, and I do want to say it this way, we are willing to invest $4.5 million to ensure that people at the 80% AMI live in my city moving forward with all this development. And if that's too simplistic, let's complicate it from there. But I know there's a bunch of other moving parts, but at its base level, my understanding is, is that, in this hypothetical, recognize that big word, people, hypothetical, but nonetheless, that's what we're looking at right now.
Councilmember Sonmore?
And so can I go off of what you're saying, Steve? So if it's at 50%, that would be for 300 affordable units, would cost the city, and it could go up to 600 units possibly, and they're already being built. Does that go with the rest of what you were saying?
That it scales up.
Right, it would be for 300 affordable units. The four, well, if you averaged it, or if you looked at it that way, it would be $4 million to get 300 affordable units if we did 50% of the total target area of 3,000.
Just to be clear, the, the four million, four and a half million is for one 250-unit project.
Yeah, that's what I was getting.
So one 250-unit project would generate 12.8 million in revenue, but we would be, to use councilmember Woodard's words, we would be investing $4.5 million per 250-unit project.
And I guess my argument would be too, is I'd like to make sure the housing authority could build something here, but also I believe that things are going to be built here, especially with light rail here. So I'm just trying to look at the best way to bring people in at that certain level with also making that amount of money. Because if you say that it would bring in 12 million, what happens if we, they just built it the way they're supposed to build it without any of this, wouldn't that go up higher?
It would. It's, it's a policy decision on whether affordable housing is, is a goal of council or a priority of council.
Okay.
It is, but aren't there different ways of looking at affordable, different housing?
Sure, this is a way to incentivize private development. I also wanted to answer, I think we found the answer, I conflated it with the 20-year, the 20-year MFT program requires affordability for 99 years. The 12-year is, just runs the length of the, yeah.
Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, and I think this is a really important policy conversation, as the city manager notes, it's, you know, we're still talking about, you know, fair market rents, and, you know, for a studio, you know, at, you know, for, for one person, you know, a rent is still likely to be, you know, nearly $2,000 based off of the HUD, you know, fair market rent schema. So I think, you know, this is real money for, for folks who are, you know, you know, nothing's getting cheaper anymore. We're, we're talking about a degree of affordability, you know, whatever your opinion of that word is. I think, you know, this is, this is important to me personally, because I know that, you know, there's a lot of instability out, out there, a lot of people who might be qualifying for this program may be making a lot less, and, and these units, you know, will house them, and they, they may still be rent burdened by this. I think we're, you know, we're doing, this is, this is one tool, let's, let's be clear. I hope we do a lot more, but I think, you know, if we're, we're building, you know, new units near light rail, near, hopefully increasingly vibrant and interactive town center, these are folks who are going to be our neighbors and contribute to this, this program we've been working on for a long time, you know, certainly far longer than I've even lived in town in terms of town center. And I, I just hope that, I, I think there is, there is value in this program that's already in place, and I think putting the extension in place also makes sense. I think it, it gets us, gets us, well, I think it, it honors a lot of the hope in town for, you know, working towards more affordable housing. And I know that's controversial because we have, we can do a lot more than, than just this, but I think the extension, in my mind, makes, makes good sense. So, there you go.
And my point is, is not about the affordable housing. My point is what profit is made, and I wish that we could do that with every apartment unit, just automatically, it has to be so many that are at a certain rent. And so that, my mind's more philosophical, and where the profit is being made, and how it should be almost mandated that we already have something like this. So it's, mine goes to a different point of view that I know nobody will agree with, but in my mind, it makes perfect sense about looking at some of the profits that are made. And if we're going to make a real impact, I think we have to put all our brains together on something.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. I was gonna say, philosophically, I, I don't know that you would have much disagreement, Councilmember Sonmore. I mean, I love the idea that we could just decide that we are going to build lots of housing in our community for everybody at a price point that they could afford, and we could just make that happen. I, like, I would be all on board with that if we had a solution and a path forward to that 100%. I think the challenge here is, we are, so, and I know this because I was gonna say, I'm moved into Mount Lake Terrace a month after we approved light rail coming to Mount Lake Terrace, which was 16 years ago this month. I think if there was limitless profit to be made and redevelopment was a given, we would have seen more development over the course of the last 16 years. The reality is that we have not seen that development come in, and housing prices, particularly rent, for the majority of our residents who now rent, has gone up exponentially year in and year out because there is not enough places for them to live, and we have to find solutions, and the solutions aren't perfect. I was gonna say, you know, I, the, and we talked about, I will say, we talked about most of this when we talked about this program two years ago, so I'm not sure how much of this, at least from my perspective, you know, makes a lot of sense to restate from, you know, kind of my perspective. But the reason I supported it then and I support it now is because it offers some relief for some folks. It doesn't help everybody, it doesn't help folks at all income levels, but it provides some solution, and the idea of providing the possibility of extension, which again, the city manager shared, isn't necessarily a given, you know, but providing the opportunity for us to consider extension when you are a family, and speaking from experience, when you are a family that is in a unit that is, you know, that, that you're receiving reduced rates on because of, it is, you know, part of a program like this, when that goes away, there's real impact. So that is a conversation that I want us to be able to have 12 years from now, whoever is on this council, to say, you know what, is this something our community still wants and needs? My hope is that at some point, costs of housing stabilize, and we've built enough housing that programs like this aren't as necessary, but is it, is it a good, you know, intermediate solution? From my perspective, it is, and very supportive of, of, you know, moving forward. We, you know, again, we already approved this, we've approved it multiple times over the years, but the idea of adding an extension as an option seems to me to be, at least for me, is, is a given in a, so.
And my point is, I'm glad that we're having some conversation, and, and I think that's the biggest point. But just to, to your point too, some of the, some cities are really doing extremely big developments and bringing in a lot of businesses. I can show you a couple of examples, but I just wanted to have the conversation. So thank you.
Can, can we have a public, public comment on this?
Yes, we have AP Heard, and you'll have five minutes at the podium.
This feels very official. I'm AP Heard, and I work with the Millstream team on the Candela project, which is proposed just outside the station. And I also just incidentally do a lot of work on housing policy with the state legislature and other municipalities, so this, this kind of topic is something I think a lot about. And Aaron's words really ring true, that it's going to take a lot of tools in the toolkit, and none of them solves the whole problem because it's such a big and thorny problem. But I do think the MFT has been one of the most powerful tools in our state to create affordable housing. It's actually created more units of affordable housing by a factor of two compared to levies that are passed to affordable housing providers, and that is also a really important piece of the puzzle. The thing that I think is most exciting about the MFT program and the possibility of an extension is that it, as, as people have said, really allows you to stretch out the period where the units will be affordable. The Millstream project is a 426-unit project, so there would be 85 affordable units in the, in the project. If they are affordable for 24 years, that is over 2,000-unit years of affordability. So that is really significant. The other thing that is really important is that right now, as you all know, it's a difficult time to get projects financed. We are really excited to see the town center manifest in all its potential, and we really want to contribute to having an amazing front door to Mount Lake Terrace and having the activating ground floor retail, and also creating data points so that others can see that we're successful and invest behind us. At the same time, the MFT program helps in our conversations with investors and helps tip the project into viability with equity and debt investors. And of course, this is the way these big projects get built, it's not just the developer's money. There are pension funds who have fiduciary duty to people who want to retire someday that put their money in, and so they're looking at projects all the way across the country. And programs like the MFT allow us to get these projects started and build the affordable units, and also build a lot of other units near transit so that there's a lot of riders on the light rail. And as somebody noted, if you can build a lot of units, it also, over the long run, helps stabilize prices a little bit as more people come to the growth and potential of our region and also come here for climate reasons. So we're really excited with all the work that the city has done with us on this project. It's been a very difficult last couple of years in the financial markets, and I want to underscore how committed Millstream is to this community. And I think Mount Lake Terrace can continue to be a leader in providing a vibrant town center with housing at all price points. And I also just want to say thank you for taking this on, and if you have questions about sort of how the housing market works or other tools, I'm really happy to answer them. Thanks.
Can I ask a curiosity question? So when these apartments are built, are there special apartments within there? They just make for affordable housing, or it can be just any which one set aside? So if, like, there's 85 at Millstream, it's just not specific units? It can be, they're not, I, I don't want them to be called out or known that they're less affordable?
All of our, all our ordinance requires is the number. So where they're located, you know, the 20% number. So where they're located, the building, that would be up to the development community, but I can't. I don't see an instance where they would be called out and, you know, the door painted a different color or something.
Or they're smaller, or, you know, that's, that's something that I'm always worried about because you don't want to be little apartments that are like 300 feet.
No, I, I don't think that is going to happen. Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, I appreciate the question, but I thought we did address it, and I think you just unraveled it for me, which is, I thought that we did put something in there to where it's like, yeah, you can't make it the basement floor, you know, like, we've, it's got to be interspersed throughout the building. Say that again? Yes, like, there it was. Yes, that's, maybe that's what it was. That's what I, that's what I, that's what I'm remembering, I guess not physical location, but types, so.
I understand that some builders, developers did try something like that in other cities, and they, it did not work. and they, it did not work out well for them. Councilmember Payne Donovan, did you have your hand up? Oh, somebody did. All right.
Yeah, at this point, I was just asking, and I think I've heard it, but just a confirmation direction to prepare an ordinance for the 12-year extension.
I guess we can just give him a thumbs up if you have one.
Yep. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. We'll get that drafted and on your calendar.
All right. Thank you. So next, we are moving on, right? Okay. Next is the review of the contract renewals for the state lobbyist.
Thank you, Mayor. This item tonight, review for the state lobbyist, Gordon Thomas Honeywell, Shelley, and you'll see her next week when she presents the 2025 legislative agenda. Mount Lake Terrace and Gordon Thomas Honeywell, their relationship goes back to 2012, and with my experience with Shelley, they've done a great job with us in pursuing our priorities and representing us in Olympia, as well as coordinating in-town events and opportunities for us to address our legislative delegation. So you can see the Exhibit A here that is, is attached. It's all the same things, register with the PDC as the city's lobbyist, and development of comprehensive legislative agenda and strategy, which is again, what we're doing next week. And interestingly enough, and this is the only contract so far that I've seen in the last year or so, they're not proposing an increase. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Erin. This is a comment, as much as anything, I just say, I get the unique privilege of interacting with Shelley while she's doing her job on our behalf. Not that I'm in those conversations at work, thankfully, but the, yeah, the record of Shelley and Gordon Thomas Honeywell serving our city, I've had a chance to sort of see them in action from the start in a number of different roles, start of their relationship with, with our city, and I think they do a bang-up job. I, you know, despite, you know, our continued work to, you know, get results on things like state funding of, of our Main Street and so on, you know, they're, they're in the sort of upper tier of folks who serve local governments and have nothing but praise and personal appreciation for how Shelley shows up with us and also in meeting rooms at the legislature and beyond. So I'm glad to see that, one, we're not getting a escalator for this upcoming contract and that we're continuing this relationship.
And this is on the consent?
Yes, we'll put it on consent for the 21st.
All right. I just noticed on, on the agenda here, there is no council comments.
Do we normally have council comments at a work session?
Or new business, or it's, one is new business and the other is council comments.
I am, I am blaming our city clerk.
Well, we can review the next agenda, and then we can add, can we add council, new business on here?
Sure.
Council comments, whatever it is.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so we've, we've looked at the next agenda. We were talking about a lot of it. Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. I think there's a couple of things I have questions on for the next agenda. So we have the resolution approving recreation five-year fee schedule. I know we had some discussion about that. Did we, I guess, we talked about budget and fees and, you know, like, where are we at in that conversation? Because I know there was questions amongst council, and I don't know that we have come back to the conversation, at least not here in a meeting.
Yeah, so we are, we looked at it. I provided some of the numbers in the splits last week for residents versus non-residents. We have not done an analysis of what, you know, how we would rebalance that. What we heard, and I think the direction that we're going, is when we do the 2026 amendments, next year, when we redo it, we will look at that balance. We can, if you want us to, but it's going to happen at the last meeting in December.
So, so the resolution that's on the consent calendar for next week is as the new amend, or the new fee schedule as was presented to council, not with any other feedback or questions from council?
Correct. So, and that's just a timing issue. We had planned to do that in '26. If you want us to do it now, we certainly can. Like I said, it will be a new discussion item and not on consent, and will probably be December 19th.
I mean, I would, I would pull, I, I, I am not ready to support that as it stands, so I think at a minimum, it needs to come off the consent agenda so that we can revisit as a council if, you know, the majority support moving forward with it. I think that's fine, but I don't think, yeah, the consent calendar is probably the right space for that.
Good.
Councilmember Salmur?
Yes, so the city has direction. What were the items that you were concerned about? I don't know if you remember off the top of your head, but.
Oh, I do.
But is there a list, maybe to, because I didn't have too much problem with it, but I wanted to make sure that your questions get addressed. And so I'm just wondering, they have something that they can go on if we remove it?
Yeah, I mean, so I think myself, I know Mayor Proton Wall isn't here, but had questions or kind of potential guidance as well. So we had initially with the six-year plan for our recreation fee schedule, had, you know, approved, as we do, you know, ahead of time, kind of what those fee increases look like. Staff came back with fee increases, revised fee increases for next year that were significantly increased. And there, I think my concern, I'll just speak for myself, was particularly about how that impacted our residents, because some of the fees were fairly substantial. And I do think that at least my perspective is, you know, we have a resident fee and a non-resident fee, and we heard some of the percentages of usage of our facilities where non-residents far outnumber our residents. And so I think continuing to increase non-resident fees till we are at a place that is more consistent with the market while trying to hold down the fees of our residents would be my preference. And so, but there's budgetary impacts to that because it was factored into the budget proposals that we already saw. So I think we were hoping to see what it would look like if we maintained either current or the previously approved revise, or the previously approved resident numbers for our recreation fee schedule while adopting or even increasing to make up the difference, the non-resident fees. But that's, I think that's as far as the conversation went. So.
And I'm fine with removing it. Those questions get answered.
Anyone else? Oh, on the agenda. We're still on the agenda.
I obviously pointed out the obvious that we didn't do the public defender or prosecutor, so you would clearly take that off.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put that on there somewhere.
Okay. All right. So then we're, we're gonna just, is it council comments that we decided to call it? Does anyone have any council comments? Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. Two quick ones. I'd, in the spirit of, well, I don't remember that. I'd, one, I believe we agreed that we would type and submit our council reports. So don't come with a nine-week report next week. It should only be the last two weeks, like it would have normally have been. That was council member, was it yours? It was Erin's idea. So thank you. Thank you, council member. So, I mean, send it to our wonderful city clerk as soon as possible, preferably before next week. Again, I'm pretty sure we all agreed that we would just flush the seven into the ether. Obviously, you can bring maybe one forward or something like that, because you know we're going to. Don't kid yourself. I know I'm going to. By we, my pronoun is we. I told you all that already. And then number two, just in case you didn't see it, because it technically came from the AWC, and I have a tendency to just kind of move things through, it does not come from my city manager, but City Action Days has been listed with the dates, and I have already said I'm interested in going. So just kind of putting that in front of you all that, if that is of interest to you. It did come through in an email. It just was in that really nice AWC one, but you had to kind of be paying attention to that because a lot of that stuff is shattered to me, but that one is not. So I hope some of you can make it, if not all of us, again.
Anyone else? Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Just then, for your information, the Maverick Cares, which is our company that owns the three of our gambling facilities here in the city, are sponsoring and want some help on Saturday, November 23rd. So in one, two, three Saturdays, 11 to 3, choose a time that works for you. You can show up for an hour of that. It's going to be at the Crazy Moose. I know it's your favorite, down on 220th, and help pass out the turkey and the, usually there's a pumpkin pie there, and help direct traffic. So if you're interested in volunteering, contact Maverick Cares, and it's part of the Maverick Gaming. So they own the three facilities here, all three on 220th. So just FYI, thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Okay.
Our DEIC commission meeting? Yeah, we are back to regularly scheduled programming this month at 7:00 on Wednes, the third Wednesday. So, sorry.
I actually meant they have an event that they're sponsoring with the school district that same day.
Oh, as the, I don't have that on my calendar.
I can speak to it if you didn't.
Go for it. Yeah, no, please, please. I was gonna say, you know, I'm used to getting home very late these days.
No, perfect. So thank you, Councilmember Ryan, for pointing out the Maverick Cares. We actually have a second event that same day, that if you time it right, you can do both, which is the DEIC is partnering with a number of folks, Mount Lake Terrace High School in particular, for Indigenous Month. It's an event that they're having. It's a pretty large window, but it's beautiful that it overlaps together. So as council members, I would encourage you to try to make both. That's my plan. And if anybody wants to ride with me, you're welcome to ride with me. Can't have more than one of you, though, right? Because we'll get into the public meeting and all that. But nonetheless, I do plan to go to both events.
Sorry, and I'll just chime in. I was gonna say, I pulled up the information. Thank you, Councilmember Woodard. So Saturday, November 23rd, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Mount Lake Terrace High School. So, yeah, Native America and Alaska Native and Indigenous Heritage Month celebration. So it should be a good time. So 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Mount Lake Terrace High School in the Hub Cafeteria, which is downstairs when you walk in, and that's Saturday, November 23rd.
Go ahead, Councilmember Ryan.
I wanted to add that Maverick Cares is not just putting this event and donating one to $200, one to 200 dinners at our city, but they're also doing it in 10 other cities, all the way from Everett to Yakimaun, Pasco. So they're giving out a lot of turkeys. So I just wanted to give them a kudos. Thank you.
Okay. So I just wanted to bring up a couple of things that I saw on social media. One, and I agree with this one, one particular resident is saying that there's no lights on his street, and he lives on 54th, right by 236 in that area. And I happen to know that too, because on certain occasions, when we have events over in, in that area, I would park a couple of blocks away so that other people can use the closer parking facilities. And one or two times, it was at night, and I noticed that getting back to my car, there was no lights. So how do we end up, how did we end up with an area of Mount Lake Terrace that is that dark? And so I know you live near there too. If we could look into that, and that might be more areas than, than just that, but.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but we can find out.
All right. And then, I'll cross that out. The, oh, talk about this one later. Because we haven't, we haven't gotten home at 8:30, and I don't know how. Oh, really? Do we have more, more to talk about? Does anyone have anything else? Because I'm going to adjourn the meeting. We're adjourned.